At 3:30, we'll call the January 13th meeting to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Cappers? Mayor?
President.
Mr. Wilkie?
Here.
Mr. Tederington?
Here.
Mr. McGary?
Here.
Mrs. Mahan?
Here.
Mr. Forrest?
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is reorganization. And who wants to put Al Cappers' name up?
All of us.
Second. Good. First and second roll call.
That's for chairman.
Yes. Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, next is, we need a vice chairman.
I nominate Tom Forrest. Don't have to talk any further.
You didn't give him a chance.
Enter the second.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Better say yes.
Unanimous, okay.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the minutes. Is there any changes to the minutes? If not, we'll have a motion to accept the minutes.
Move to dog.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Third thing on the agenda is historic district review of 116 South Market Street. How do you pronounce that?
Pakamama.
Pakamama Market.
Pacha Mama.
Oh, Pacha Mama.
Pacha Mama?
Pacha Mama.
Pacha. For installation of a wall sign.
Hi.
Excuse me, we'll have a staff report first.
Okay. This is Lindsay Woodruff of Pacha Mama. She is proposing to install a wall sign in front of the building. The size of the sign is a total of 23.72 square feet. She's allowed 66 square feet. The colors for the sign are burgundy, gold, black, and tan. And there's an example that I've laid there in front of Mr. Forrest along with a sample of the actual sign material, which is alumacore. The proposed sign will meet all the City of Troy Sign Code requirements, and it will not detract from the historic integrity of the building, so staff does recommend for approval.
Anyone else have any comments? Give your name and address, please.
Oh, my name is Lindsay Woodruff, and my store address is 116 South Market Street, Troy. Do you need my personal address as well? Oh, okay.
Anyone have any questions? Do you have any comments you want to make?
No, I think it's all covered, so yeah, just hanging up a sign.
Can I move for approval?
Or...
First and second, roll call.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
It is approved.
Okay.
Put it aside.
Thank you so much.
Okay, item number four is the final plat review of Nottingham subdivision, Section 9. Staff report.
Yes, we do, thank you. The applicant is Nottingham Development Incorporated. Jessica is actually out of town, so we have the next best thing. Jeff Pudoff from Choice One is here to fill in if you have any questions. If you remember a while ago, we approved a preliminary plan for Nottingham, Section 9 and 10. This is the final plat for Section 9. It will finish off the development in the Northwest, and then it will have an aggregate based construction drive to Pickwa-Troy Road as required by the planning commission. I won't go through the whole thing because it's in your packet, but it comes as 15.152 acres. There will be 25 buildable lots, and there will be 2.753 acres of public street right of way. And as stated, they will provide the required aggregate based drive connection that's required. And staff is asking that planning commission make a positive recommendation to city council to accept the final plat because it does fall in line with the approved preliminary plan.
Any questions from commissioners? We entertain a motion?
Move for approval. Or a recommendation for approval.
Second. This is a recommendation to city council.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Unanimous approval.
Okay, next item on the agenda is rezoning application for three parcels located on Trade Square East, south of Hook Elementary School, and north of Hogarth Welding Institute of Welding Technology. Application is to rezone from our single-family residential zoning to M2 light industrial district. Do you have a report on that?
We do, thank you. Ferguson Construction, who is the applicant agent for Hogarth Institute of Welding, we do have representatives from both in the audience should you have questions. The Welding Institute is proposing a addition, or shouldn't say addition, but a new building that's going to encompass more welding students. So in the process of doing this, we have an interesting zoning issue on these parcels. We have the existing parking lot for the welding students now actually crosses over two different property lines, but it also has two different zonings, M2 and R4. They are proposed to rezone all of that to light industrial, which all of the rest of Hogarth to the south is zoned M2 light industrial currently. The reasoning for this request is to meet the large demand for professional career skill training by building this new tech center. Other reasons, the current parking area would be over capacity with the new building, so it would be required to add more parking. To do so to the north of their existing parking lot is what you have in your packet. That would be building in the R4 zoning district, which an open parking lot such as that is not allowed and approved use in that zone thereby the request for the rezoning. In reviewing, of course, you have all of this in your packet. This is consistent with the intention of the zoning code. It is consistent with the comp plan in using the vacant property to the utmost, you know, use it can be used for. And as far as the planning commission making a decision to or not to have a public hearing, there is a meeting scheduled with Hogarth Welding Institute of Representatives as well as some residents and the city for the 20th, next Wednesday evening in a week, to discuss this. But at this time, because council would need to possibly or probably have a public hearing, it's not requested here from planning commission or from staff. Staff is recommending that we approve or approve this as a positive recommendation towards council.
Anyone else have any comments?
The only question, the meeting on the 20th, that's not a public hearing, that's just an informational meeting?
Correct. I think the biggest concern from the one resident I have spoken with and emailed with was traffic. And, you know, they already have a fair amount of traffic in that area. The site currently for its current parking, they have mounding, they have trees, they have a very good buffer in place. That buffer would continue, and if this were to be presented through to council and approved, the new parking to the north would also have mounding around along with more trees. So they're, you know, the buffer between any residential and any office residential that we have in the area is going to be well protected from this expansion.
Yeah, I have one question. You said they have representatives here.
They do.
Is that a 24-hour operation?
It was a two-shift.
Two shifts.
Yeah.
Give us your name and address, please.
Joe McGovern, Ferguson Construction, 400 Canal Street, Sidney, Ohio. Hogarth is currently, the school is currently a two-shift facility, and this new building across the way would also be a two-shift facility. With about 130 total max occupants, 100 professional students. These are not trade school students that they have now necessarily. They're not expanding that operation, but they're expanding to corporations that are looking to get their current employees further training, so.
When you say two-shift, about when does that second shift end?
Scott up here. Scott's the president and CEO of Hogarth.
Name and address, please.
Scott Missoula, 400 Trade Square East. I represent Hogarth Institute of Welding Technology. I'm currently the president and CEO of the operation. And I, the question was...
The second shift, when does it typically end?
Second shift, first shift is from 8 to 4, and the second shift is 4 to 11:30. The total occupancy of the new building for second shift, Joe just reiterated that the total occupancy of the building was 130 total occupants. On second shift, the occupancy of that should never exceed 50 on second shift. Because mainly the corporate students that'll be in that building are only day shift. So some skilled students that are here the majority of the year, two of those classes will actually be in that building in the evening, so.
Thank you. You're welcome. Anyone else have any question?
Mr. Chair. Question for Dwayne. In the packet on page 31, I guess, at least on the digital page, is the current zoning blue being industrial and yellow being R4? When I look at that, and I don't know if it's just a matter of how it's overlaid with the aerial, but some of the current parking lot is in the R4?
Yes.
Okay.
And another interesting thing, when you look at that very northern parcel to the east and to the south, that parcel actually is dual zone as you look at where the property line lies. It's a unique oddity that this would also clean that up.
So north is up on the page?
Yes.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. It's like a flag lot. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anyone else? Is there any to me? Would it be appropriate to see if there's anyone else in the audience that has any comment? I think so. Anyone else in the audience have a comment? Okay. Do we need to hold a vote on the public hearing, any?
Yes. Need to have a motion.
Okay, do we have a motion to not hold a public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
So a yes means no, and a no means yes? Is that correct?
Pardon?
So a yes vote means no.
No public hearing.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
The motion is approved. The commission will not hold a public hearing.
Now, do we have a motion to make a recommendation to council or not?
I'd make the motion to recommend the change as presented. Rezoning.
Second.
Yes, we do. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Wilkie?
Yes.
Mr. Tederington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mahan?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Break ground.
Thank you very much.
Have to get it through.
Ground's too hard. That's right.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is rezoning application for IL 7136, 15.3431 acres located north of State Route 55, west of Barnhart Road, and south of Finner Road. Applicant is to rezone from M2 light industrial district to R7 multifamily residential. Staff have a report?
Yes, we do, thank you. Mid-Ohio Development Corporation, who is here with us, has applied on behalf of the Arch Diocese of Cincinnati. They are the owners of land, and we do have a letter from the Arch Diocese to allow the proposal to be made. That's in your packet. They're considering rezoning from M2 to the R7 multiple family residential. Currently, the land is undeveloped. It's located, as you stated, to the west of Barnhart Road and to the north of State Route 55. For those who are familiar with the areas, we're right across the street from Speedway that recently was there and expanded. There are some zoning, a mix of zoning districts around it. A lot of it is dominated by the M2 light industrial, some small stretches of commercial, and then some county zoning of R1 AAA, single family, to the north. The applicant has cited the reasons for the rezoning to change to the R7. Once that would be established, it is their intent to apply for a future planned development, which would be, consists of ranch-style market rate apartments at this location. When staff looks at rezoning, there are several things we take into consideration: location, need, compliance with the comprehensive plan, things of those natures. So we went ahead and went through our comprehensive plan and kind of found some information that we wanted to provide to you. If you look on page two of your report, we show several different charts. One of the things the comprehensive plan talks about is owner occupied housing versus rental housing. And if you look at table one, it talks about the number of units in each structure. And you look at Troy from 1990 to 2000, and to essentially the last census, it shows that we are the highest when compared with neighboring communities. So we have a higher rate of units between 2 and 9 in a building than our neighbors around us. This includes Miami Valley region, which is green Miami and Montgomery County. Also, it shows Pickwa, Sidney, and Tip City, just for comparison. So we do have a higher rate there. We also went ahead and looked at the comparison of owner occupied housing to Troy's neighbors, and we are at essentially 60% owner occupied, 40% rentals. And when you compare that to the other communities, we're the highest in that regard. One of the goals in the comp plan is to bring that level down to the state's level. The state has owner, or I'm sorry, up to the state's level, the state's level has 69% owner occupied, where we're just at 60%. They have 31% rental occupied, and we're at 40. The comprehensive plan, it does talk about future uses and goals. And when I looked at the land use for the comp plan specifically for that area, if you look at chapter, the land use chapter 14 under the southwest sub-area, I'll kind of read it to you. It's very short, but it talks about neighborhood commercial district. Land uses are indicated in three areas, the State Route 55 and Barnhart Corner being one of those. It says, "Uses at these intersections should be non-residential but compatible to neighboring properties." When we look at several different things, including the need, the location, what the comprehensive plan says, staff doesn't feel that the rezoning would be appropriate on this parcel. There are several things when you do a rezoning, Section 113907, which probably doesn't mean a whole lot to you guys, but it outlines a criteria on which to base the decisions. I won't read through those, but those are also in your packet as well. And we, we as staff are recommending a negative recommendation to city council for this rezoning for the several reasons. One is the proposed rezoning does not satisfy all the criteria of the zoning code in which is required for a positive recommendation. Two, the proposed use of the property does not bring the full economic potential of the property should it be developed with commercial and industrial. Three, we would have traffic concerns. We don't fully control the streets of Finner Road, which would be heavily impacted should this be developed. And lastly, the proposed rezoning is not consistent with the City of Troy comprehensive plan. A planning commission would have to, as the other rezoning, would have to decide whether or not to hold a public hearing. And due to the non-compliance with the City of Troy comp plan, staff feels that a public hearing is warranted should the rezoning have a positive recommendation from planning commission. The applicants are here, and I think they have some items prepared. A video I have set up for them as well. I'll turn it over to you guys for any questions you may have.
Anyone have any questions right now before the presentation?
Just a quick one. If the commission recommends not approving, doesn't it require a supermajority on the part of council to override that?
Yes, they actually would have time to, yes, make a recommendation, I think within 20 days of your decisions of the minutes, and then council would have to approve it with a supermajority, yes.
Do you remember the number that we require?
I thought it was 3/4.
I think it's seven of the nine, I believe.
Well, that's right, we got nine. Anyone else? Is there a presentation to be made?
You want to start the video, or do you want to?
I think we can forego the video at this point. Thank you. My name's Roni Murphy, president of Mid-Ohio Development Corporation. We're located at 4393 Arbor Lake Drive, Groveport, Ohio. Just, if I could, maybe I, we were established, family-owned and operated company, established in 1963. I've been in this, your city, I've announced to a lot of you for 18 months. If you can point me to a site other than this, I'd be happy and welcome it with open arms, because I can tell you a lot of your community founders, I can tell you about Noonam on West Stanfield, I can tell you about Ed and Joanne Huddy across from Honda. I can tell you about the Mezlers, I can tell you about the Mum Powers, I can tell you about Experiment Road. The first site we stopped at was a Catholic church. After 18 months and seven contracts and being told behind the scenes no, and being next to F&amp;P, and all over your community, we finally got Cincinnati Arch Diocese to agree to let us go into contract with them. What we do, this is just simply a site rendering, is 124-unit community of market rates rental, market rate ranch apartments. And that rendering there is eight to the acre. If it were to apply under your R7, your R7 lives for 14 and 1/2 to the acre. We don't go for heavy density. It's staffed seven days a week at the community center along with the pool and all and the amenities. And then this is just the community down the road in Huber Heights that we built on 202 next to Carriage Trails. One of the things that I'm not the best at, that I, if I could respect your time and turn it over to Ken Danter. Ken Danter is a national feasibility and market study individual, or consultant if you will. And we don't randomly select towns. Ken said, "You need to go to Troy." And so I thought, rather than me trying to redact what he told us, that I just give him the floor for a minute to tell you why he suggested we come to the community of Troy.
Ken, if you would.
Ken Danter, president of the Danter Company, Columbus, Ohio. We do get around the country a bit. We've been to Troy many times and Miami County many, many times. As Roni said, when, one of the charges we were given by Mid-Ohio was to identify markets that would be appropriate for their product. And we identified probably 15 or 20 markets around the state and looked at the various attributes of those, and Troy came to the top of the list, probably in the top four or five markets that would be appropriate. We look at a lot of things. We look at age and income cohorts, we look at homeownership rates, we look at rental rates in the market, we look at employment and employment trends. There are major changes going on in most of the markets that we're involved in today. And the changes that we have not seen in the past that makes this particular product appropriate, and we started talking to Mid-Ohio about bending their product line in this direction many, many years ago because of where we saw these markets going. If we look at Troy, for example, between 2010 and 2020, population under age 45 is going to decline by 4%. Population over age 65 is going to increase by 37% during that period of time. Households in that same age cohort will decrease by 7%. In the plus 65 cohort, they will increase by 35%. Because of this, we're seeing a lot of our community clients begin to create strategies to do two things. Number one, to find alternative housing that seniors are looking for in their market, and also to provide rental housing for young professionals that become the workforce in that market. What we're seeing is today that employers more and more are faced with the problem of attracting young people to the workforce, young qualified people to workforce. We look at markets that we work in, like New Albany or Dublin, that are doing things today that they would never have dreamed of doing 10 years ago. Worthington is another market doing things today that wouldn't dream of doing 10 years ago. The reason for that is, if you look at that disparity between the growth rates of the young and the old in the market, and you look at the impact on homeownership, and if you look at the impact on the housing market, if you consider that in a move-up market, let's say a $75,000 income market, that those households under age 45 are buyers, are consumers of housing, looking for neighborhoods, they're looking for churches, proximity to schools, proximity to jobs. If you look at that cohort over age 65, they're the sellers of housing. Those are the people who are looking for alternative lifestyles. 10 years ago, we had a big market in range condominiums. The over 65 group has lost confidence in that condominium product, and now they're looking at a rental product that does the same thing, provides the same lifestyle kinds of choices. So if you look at the under 45 on one side and the over 65 on the other side, in the year 2000 in Troy, there were four households in that under 45 cohort for every selling household in that over 65 cohort. Four-to-one ratio. That ratio made us all feel like heroes because we had all kind of equity in our house, values were going up, we felt very, very good about that. We had a very robust single-family market because we had a disparity between the buyers and sellers. Today in Troy, that four-to-one ratio is 1.6 to 1. In 2020, it'll be 1.3 to 1. We're losing demand against supply. What many markets are doing strategically then is saying, "These seniors are going to move. Number one, we want to keep them in our community because this is the culture, this is the foundation of our community. We don't want them moving into other markets." At the same time, if we keep them in the market, we give them a good opportunity that frees homes up for single-family buyers, homes that otherwise might be in a period of long decline. We see in many communities where we have a declining household stock because of the people who can no longer take care of those properties. So we're seeing a lot of strategies to deal with all of those issues. But if we look at a market, like just about any market we're looking at, they're doing several things. Number one, trying to provide apartments that will be of a high enough caliber that in all likelihood they will be the last apartment somebody, a household, a younger person will ever live in before they buy a single-family house. Building in, Dublin today probably has 3,000 rental units in their pipeline. 10 years ago, you couldn't go near Dublin with a rental unit because they see that for two reasons. Number one, it supports the existing housing stock. Number two, it brings employees in to satisfy the needs of the employers who are really fighting for a declining base of potential employees. We're seeing the same thing in just about every community we go in, and it's because of this disparity between the buyers and sellers. This particular product really does both because about 60% of the people who move into here will be moving out, will be seniors moving out of a product that is a homeownership product already in the marketplace. The other 40% are the potential employees that our employers are fighting for. That's one of the things we looked at when we picked Troy. The other thing we do, we need to make sure that this product is going to be perceived as a value in the market. So we look at all of the products. We did a 100% survey of all rental product in this market, and we evaluate that based on the quality of the product, the amount of amenities, number of unit amenities, project amenities. Because what we wanted to do is recommend a product that people will walk into, look at it, and say, "This is a value. This is a value in the marketplace." It may be more expensive than everything else, and in all likelihood, it will be more expensive than anything in the market. But it will still be, because of the type of product it is, be perceived as a value. The second test is, excuse me, is are there enough people to support it at that value? And in this case, once we run all of our numbers, look at our demographics, compare this against pure cities, and it passes both of those tests, it will be perceived as a value, and we have the underlying support on both the young professional side and on the senior side to support the 100% of the units that we recommended. So that's how we got here. Any questions?
Anyone have any question? Thank you.
I'd like to commend the staff on the report. I think you did an excellent job putting this together. I don't see this benefiting the community, and I would recommend for you to disapprove of it.
Do you make an edit?
In the form of a motion.
As a negative?
Negative of...
Vote to disapprove the council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, should we discuss the public hearing here first and then a recommendation on the rezoning itself?
Well, I think...
Do I understand you need a...
Do you...
Do I understand you need a?
Do you think that we would need a public hearing?
We do not need, no. Just to try to be consistent with the last rezoning that we just did and which we do all the time, whether, regardless of whether it's a negative or positive, don't we always talk about the public hearing at the Planning Commission level as a second hearing? What yours, with the staff, yeah, with the staff recommendation?
Do we need a public hearing if the recommendation is no?
We don't need a public hearing in any case.
No, I understand that.
I, I think I see what, what you're saying is let's, in other words, make a motion not to hold a public hearing even though we've got a negative presentation.
Right. I mean, the whole idea of the public hearing is to, if we're going to hold one, then we would not have a vote tonight up or down on the rezoning. And so if we're not going to hold the public hearing, because council has to have one if it goes to the next level with a negative, then we get that one out of the way first, and then we talk about the, the actual result.
I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll vote on the public hearing first.
Well, we need a.
Did I ask a question?
Yes. Give us your name, Mr. Representative.
I'm Ted Lyons, and I have a neighbor to the area that we're talking about. And some of the neighbors are just interested in understanding a little bit more about what, what's being put there. And because the speech was in this direction and the pictures were in this direction, I'm not sure I can really tell them much about it. Is this the time and the place for us to be informed as to what's being considered?
Well, there, this is part of the process that we're going through, Mr. Chair, and this one could be a little more unique than the normal ones because in the majority of the cases, we make a positive appro, a, a positive recommendation to the council. The council, by state law, has to hold a public hearing, at which point then anybody interested, anybody within.
250 feet.
250 feet of that property gets a, a letter that says, "Hey, we're having a public hearing. If you want to speak in favor or opposed, or just speak your mind about it, there's the time and place to do that." So in this case, if, if the majority decision were to not recommend this or provide a negative recommendation to the council, then I believe that the, the applicant has the right to request it go to council anyway?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So then, then the next step would be up to the, the applicant. They would go to council, and then council has to have a public hearing, and then you would get notified if you're within 250 feet.
I didn't, I didn't catch a lot of the rationale as to why they picked Troy. May I ask two or three questions that might give me a.
It's a pleasure, Mr. Chair.
A little better feel for what we're talking about. May we understand the, the market that you're targeting? Is it, is it, is it best defined as an income level, or how is that? Or an age level? Is it senior housing, or is it youth housing? Can you give me an answer?
This, this particular product is program procedures. In fact, the experience has been valid, it's not age restricted. About 60% of the people who move in will be seniors, and about the 40% are generally going to be age 28, 35. Generally speaking, they will be singles or couples. There's 124 units, if there's three siblings, children, they would be surprised. So it's very.
124 units?
And the, given the rents, the rents are relatively high considering. It is among the highest-priced product in the marketplace. Other than a handful of 100-inch units, the income requirement for a 200-inch unit is in excess of $40,000 a year.
40,000?
Yes. So, so it can be defined both by age and by income.
And would these be mainly for sale or for rental, or?
These would be for rental.
They'd all be rental units?
Yes, sir.
And that's the layout right there on the 200s? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can, if I can just ask a follow-up to one, a nice, good question that you asked. And I'm not sure who'd ask this, but Tim maybe. However, while they may target certain demographics, the development will be straight market-rate apartment?
Right. There's no age restrictions going to be put in place, from my understanding. We, we did go and visit one of the developments in Huber Heights, and it was kind of this, it's the same concept, market rates, and those were open to all ages, I guess.
As I understand, is this your development down at Huber?
Yes, that is.
And that, is that on 202?
Correct.
And is that a similar development to this?
That would be identical.
Identical?
Yeah.
So would you go down there and see what you're doing? Is, is that completed now, or people living there and everything?
It's not 100% complete, but there are residents living there. It's about 40 to 50% complete. Community center's open and fully staffed.
Okay. I think I've had answers to most of the questions that I had. Oh, you said 124 units?
That's correct.
And eight units per acre?
Yes.
Okay. Good. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, then, thank you.
As a point of order, I, I believe some, some of you may want to have a public hearing. Just, oh, I was going to say, I would withdraw my.
Just a, just a, I, I just as procedurally, I wonder if we're supposed to.
So that we can take up whether we have a public hearing.
Okay. Anyone else got any comments?
I would move that this commission not have a public hearing.
Second.
Who has a person to say?
Yes, it's no, no, we'll call this.
Did you get a question?
Yes, I did.
That's correct.
Okay.
A yes vote means no hearing and no vote.
Yes.
Yes, it's no hearing.
It's a no. Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Unanimous, the Planning Commission will not hold a public hearing.
Okay, then we need a motion on, on the recommendation to council.
I will make a motion that we recommend that the council not approve the rezoning.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second. Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is adopted. This is not being recommended to council, however, the applicant has leave a 20-day period in which to provide a written request that this be forwarded to council with a negative recommendation. That's up to them.
What, what was that conclusion again?
The Planning Commission is not recommending this rezoning to council.
Not recommending what?
That the rezoning be approved.
So Ted will be up to council. They, they, they could change our recommendation, but it takes a three-fourths count for council members to, to reverse our decision.
The applicant request to be forwarded.
Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I can just make a comment, maybe we've already, you know, while I appreciate the high interest that they've shown, and, and it is, and their emphasis on sustaining a strong workforce, which all of us would love to have, you know, my, my concern is always the proposed area. What we have in that area, the recommendation, I agree with Mr. Walkie, the work of our staff, and what they, the hard work they put into, to looking at this through our comprehensive plan, I didn't go so far as to say, in a regional area, our going places also looks at areas that are light industrial, and that is in an area that would, might be best suited, especially with the traffic, the interstate. There's a lot of things going on. If we remember, we have recently approved a development for seniors on Town Park Drive, and that's, so that's going to bring in, you know, a number of people there. We have been working on riverfront development and trying to bring people to the river, and that includes that millennial group we're trying to bring on that east end. You know, there's a lot of reasons why I voted the way I did. I, I think that's an area that we need to look at real closely and not overpopulate it, but look at it as, we don't have that much land that is set aside for just business or light industrial, and that seems to be best suited, in my opinion, for that area. I just thought I'd share why I voted the way I did.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is proposed amendments to the zoning code. Staff?
Yes, thank you. Staff is recommending that Planning Commission recommend this language to city council regarding fences. Essentially, we have always treated fences as accessory structures, and it was brought to us from the law director that there's a couple of sections that may conflict, and we wanted to take this time to amend our sections, to redefine them, so it would be spelled out that we are treating them as accessory structures. We're asking for three alterations to the zoning code. The first one would be a modification to section 115104C1, and essentially that's asking for some language that, to that, to that section. What we have is, right now, our fence code requires fences to be built to the property line, where our accessory structures in the zoning code says that all accessory structures should be set back five feet from the property line. Those two things kind of conflict, so we wanted to add the language, basically accept as required by the fence code into our accessory structures, so that would negate any conflict that, that may be there. To reassure that we want to have fences be treated as accessory in the definition of fence, we wanted to add the word accessory to that definition. And lastly, the third alteration we're asking is regarding the setback line. Essentially, we want to add language, so the principal structure, I'll just give you a normal lot, you would have a house. That house would set the setback line, so anything in front of that house would be considered in the front yard. Anything to the rear, that would be in the rear yard. The way we have it now, it's by distance, so if your house is actually 50 feet back, the fence code could be built to a maximum of six feet at that setback line. So we're just trying to, to get consistency with what's on the lot. That's why we're asking language be changed to the definition of setback line. These were in your packet, and we are asking for a positive recommendation to city council.
As I, as I read this, I understood this, basically the way that was read then, if you, if you was to build a fence in your backyard, you'd have to move 5 feet on property.
No, well.
The way it was?
The, the way it was, yes, yes. We're trying to, trying to change that, so fences could be built on the property line. Right now, fences, we actually ask for fences to be on the property line. If there's another fence there that's not compatible with, you have to move five feet back. So we're just trying to make the two sections not conflict with each other.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So the way I've understood it is, this is, what you're recommending is just to clarify what historically we've always done as practice, so we're not changing our enforcement, not changing any of the rules related to, to fences. We just found out that there are sections, the fence code, that are not as clear as the zoning code sections and vice versa.
Correct.
One question. This is for staff, and alter, alteration number three. Make sure I understand this is, if you have a setback on a house, say a corner house, the, the, the edge of the house facing the street is the setback line, regardless of what the setback is.
Correct. That's what this would do, yes.
Okay. Now, if, if that doesn't work in some cases for some people, it, you know, whether you're downtown and some lots, you know, it actually looks better when you architect your layout or landscape out of fence. They can, they can still get a permit or?
Yeah, there's still, there's still a variance for location and placement of fences.
Any other questions? Now, what, what kind of a motion do you need?
Just a positive recommendation to city council.
So moved. You want a second?
Is there a public hearing required on, by council on part of this, like, on the agenda?
Oh, that's right, we got to.
I don't think we, I don't.
The zoning code.
Yeah, we usually don't. Council's a, I guess I refer the clerk of council to let me know if there was a public hearing at the council level.
If the zoning code changed, council will hold a public hearing. I didn't.
I'm sorry, I missed it on your, says, "Commission determine whether or not we hold a public hearing."
I'll make a motion that we not hold a public hearing at the Planning Commission level.
Do you second?
I'll second that. Mr. McGary?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Okay, the Planning Commission will not hold a public hearing on any proposed changes to the zoning code.
Mr. Walkie, you want to state your proposal?
I move that we recommend the, the council approve the changes.
Do you second?
Second. Mrs. Mayhem?
Yes.
Mr. Forrest?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Walkie?
Yes.
Mr. Titterington?
Yes.
Mr. McGary?
Yes.
It is approved.
Is there any other?
Nothing further, thank you.
Okay. You obtain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any second?